This is Caleb Jones. He is from Potterville, Michigan. He was in the United States Coast Guard from 2009 to 2013. He attended Kellogg Community College where he received his degree in public safety. He is accompanied by his mother, Heidi Jones, who will be pinning his badge on him this evening. Ms. Jones? Next is Officer Adrian Cole. He was born in Jacksonville, Florida, but is a lifelong Kalamazoo resident. Graduated from Parchment High School, where he went to Western Michigan University and earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and sociology. Adrian is being accompanied by his daughter, Adeline. Is that correct? Adeline? Adeline, okay. And brother Austin and his mother, Tammy Austin. And Adeline will be pinning his badge on him this evening. Come on, baby. Next is Officer Peter Redenovic. Peter Redenovic is originally from Beograd, Serbia. He went to high school and played ice hockey in Serbia and Slovakia. Peter is married and has two children, a boy and a girl. He became a U.S. citizen in 2011. He'll be pinned by Deputy Chief Karyon Thomas. Next is Officer Brendan Westrick. Brendan was born in Kalamazoo and raised in Cassopolis, where he attended Ross Beatty High School until graduating in 2011. He then went to obtain an associate's degree from Southwestern Michigan College, an EMT license, and his firefighter one and two certification. Prior to being hired by Kalamazoo Public Safety, Brendan was an EMT for the Edwardsburg Antwa Township Ambulance Service, a volunteer firefighter for the Central Cass Fire Department, a reserve officer for Cass and St. Joe County Sheriff's Department, and a dispatcher for the St. Joe County Central Dispatch. He is being pinned by his father, Douglas Westrick, a lieutenant for the Cass County Sheriff's Department. Mr. Westrick? Captain Randolph, are you, is he here? I think that might be a discussion at the Christmas dinner conversation. Next is Pat, excuse me, next is Patrick Hillebrand. Patrick Hillebrand is originally from Vicksburg, graduating from Vicksburg High School in 2005. Patrick served in the United States Army as an infantryman for three and a half years. He has a brother, Michael, and a sister, Katie. Patrick is being pinned by Katie Hillebrand, his mother. Kathy, I'm sorry, Hillebrand. I'm sorry. Let's see, Officer Stephanie Alfred. Stephanie Alfred was born in Fort Wayne, Indiana, and has lived in Michigan since 2001. She has two daughters, Taylor and Haley. Stephanie has an associate's degree from KVCC in law enforcement, criminal justice, and volunteers for the Van Buren County Mounted Division. Joanne, her mother, and her two daughters, Taylor and Haley, will be pinning her tonight. Next is Officer Damonte Span. Damonte Span was born in Muskegon, Michigan. He grew up in Ypsilanti, Michigan, and graduated from Bellevue High School in 2010. He has an associate's degree in criminal justice from Washtenaw Community College. Prior to being hired by Public Safety, Damonte served as a rehabilitation associate at Eisenhower Center in Ann Arbor, Michigan. Damonte currently resides in Kalamazoo, Michigan. His mother, Linda, and girlfriend, Alyssa, will be pinning him tonight. Next up is Officer Chelsea Amelia. Chelsea Amelia was born and raised in Clarkston, Michigan. She graduated in 2009 and went straight into the United States Navy. After serving four years active duty, she came home and joined the Air National Guard. She graduated in 2016 from Oakland Community College with a criminal justice degree. She's engaged and is a proud mother of two children. She'll be pinned by her fiance, Sean Todd. Next is Officer Aaron DeWol. Aaron DeWol was born and raised in Kalamazoo and is the son of John and Sharon DeWol. Aaron graduated from high school in Honduras, I can't pronounce the first name, where his parents served as missionaries. After returning to Kalamazoo from Honduras, he joined the United States Marine Corps and is still serving in the reserves as a squad leader for a machine gun section. Aaron and his wife reside in the Edison neighborhood, where they actively participate in street ministry. Aaron will be pinned by his wife, Jackie. Next up is Officer Christopher Lockett Ali. Christopher Lockett Ali was born in Redondo Beach, California, and is the son of Larry Ali and Loretta Lockett Ali. He grew up in Kalamazoo area and graduated from Hackett Catholic Central High School in 2006. After graduating, Christopher served in the United States Marine Corps for five years. While in the Marine Corps, he served overseas at United States Embassies in Cuba, Germany, and Jordan. He began taking college courses while on active duty and obtained his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from American Military University in 2014. Prior to being hired by Public Safety, Christopher served as a reserve sheriff's deputy in Alligan County and as a contracted security officer for the Department of Homeland Security in the southwest Michigan area. Christopher and his wife currently reside in Portage, Michigan. He will be pinned by his wife, Megan. Next up is Officer Rachel Marlene Blank. Rachel Marlene Blank was born in Kalamazoo and has three siblings. She is a graduate of Alligan High School and Kalamazoo Valley Community College, where she obtained her Associate's of Arts degree. She previously worked as a dispatcher for Kalamazoo Public Safety. She will be pinned by Deputy Chief Karyon Thomas. Next is Officer Ryan Roddy. Ryan Roddy was born in Tennessee, but grew up on the east side of the state in Flushing, Michigan. He graduated from Flushing High School in 2012 and started his college career at Saginaw Valley State University. During this time, he served as a firefighter and a reserve police officer. Ryan graduated from Saginaw Valley State University in 2016 with his bachelor's degree in criminal justice and management. After graduating, he moved to Kalamazoo and started his career with the Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety. Ryan's parents, Todd and Rena, and his brother Tyler, will be pinning his badge on him this evening. Next up is Officer Matthew Grenate. Matthew was born in Kalamazoo and grew up on a small farm in Plainwell, Michigan. He joined the United States Air Force in 2011 and served four years of active duty as a firefighter. Matt left the Air Force in 2015 to move back to Michigan and pursue a career at the Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety. Matt and his wife, Megan, have been married for five years and have one daughter, Gianna. Megan and Gianna will be pinning his badge on him this evening. Next up is Jason Beckwith. Jason Beckwith was born in Hastings, Michigan, and grew up in Wayland, Michigan. Jason joined the Wayland Fire Department in 2002, attended the Grand Rapids Community College Police Academy, graduated in 2008. He worked for the Wayland Police Department from 2009 to 2016 until he was hired by the Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety. Married to his wife, Robin, they have two daughters, Jersey and Gianna, and his two daughters will pin his badge on him this evening. Our final officer of the evening, Catrice Lockett. Catrice was born in, I can't read your handwriting, Catrice. Grand Rapids, Michigan. She's a third of three children to Ernest Dean and Daniel Lockett. She, what's that?
Tristan.
I got you. She has a son, Tristan Lockett. She attended Grand Valley State University Police Academy, and she'll be pinned this evening by her son, Tristan Jacob Lockett. Now, if the city commission and the mayor would do the honor of coming down and shaking the hands of your newly pinned officers. All right, we ain't done yet. We've got a couple more things to do. Now, I asked City Clerk Scott Borland to come over and swear in the officers to their oath of office.
Yeah, we forgot that most important item. I'm sorry, too. I got excited. What can I say?
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if you'll please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of public safety officer according to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Now, as we close this ceremony this evening, I want to leave our new public safety officers with a few words that I hope will resonate with them. I want you to look around, look at your family, your fellow officers, citizens here this evening, city commissioners. Just take a look at them. I mean that sincerely. These people care enough about you to be here today. They all love you in their own way. They want to encourage you, support you, guide you, coach you, train you, and ensure that you're the best that you can be. They will support you in ways you never thought imaginable. They do this and ask very little in return. They ask, and I ask, the following, and it really is this simple. Care. It all starts with that, I believe. Work hard. Tell the truth. Be humble. Treat people like you want to be treated. And love and enjoy this community. That is the contract. It isn't very complicated. You are officers of a superb department in a superb community, and we are proud to have you serve with us and for us. All my best. Thanks. In closing, I'm going to have Police Chaplain Roger Allman come and say just a few words. Then after that, all the families are invited to go down to either the atrium downstairs or the community room, take pictures, do whatever you need to do, have pictures together. We have some officers here with cameras. They'll be glad to take as many pictures as you would like to memorialize the moment this evening. So without any further ado, chaplain.
Thank you, chief. It is such an honor to serve Kalamazoo Public Safety now for two years. And I would like to say to all of our new officers, I look forward to doing mini ride-alongs with you and spending time with you. It is an honor, absolute honor, what you are doing for our city. We want to thank you. It's a privilege to also serve you in this department. I love this department. And just before I pray, just to bless you again, is may you always know how much God loves you. Let me pray for you. Heavenly Father, thank you so much, again, for these officers, these men and women who have sacrificed so much. And we ask now that you would go before them and grant them favor in the community, that they would be enforcers of peace, and they would bring peace. And we do ask not only for our city, but for our country, that you would bring peace. And so, Lord, thank you again, keep them from evil and harm, and again, thank you for their dedication, not only to our city, but to their families, to their friends, what examples they are. So, Lord, we commit them to you, and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Commissioners, we're going to take a little recess to allow the room to be reset and folks to exit and enjoy their family members. So we'll take a couple minutes. Commissioners, we'll reconvene. We have on our agenda tonight a report on the farmer's market, an update on the farmer's market, and Chris Broadbent, there he is, he got a haircut. It's here, our farmer's market manager, and he's going to give us an update on the farmer's market. And make an introduction, I believe.
City Commissioners, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor, city managers and attorneys, wonderful citizens of Kalamazoo, it's an honor and a privilege to be here tonight. My name is Chris Broadbent, and for the past four years, I've served as the farmer's market manager for the Kalamazoo Farmer's Market. My colleague, Gabby Gerken, is here today. She's going to be taking over the farmer's market in the seasons to come, and I'm excited to introduce you to her and talk a little bit about the past successes that we've had. This past season at the Kalamazoo Farmer's Market, we worked to connect customers to food sources, creating honest learning relationships, and supporting local food businesses through a vibrant market culture. We do this in the work underneath the banner of the People's Food Co-op, a community-owned cooperative business here in Kalamazoo that's owned by over 3,000 community members and operates to create access to food for all, that's healthy for people, land, and the economy. Our team and our work takes us to 1204 Bank Street, where the Kalamazoo Farmer's Market happens three days a week, from May through November, every season. It's a season that's longer than the football season and the baseball season and the basketball season. season, and something that we're proud to be a part of. This year, we served 212 unique businesses at the Kalamazoo Farmer's Market. That could be a business that comes every Saturday, every market day, every event, or a business that appears one time. Either way, we had 53 farmers, 80 value-added product producers, 19 retailers, and 46 different artisans come through and participate. As well as this year, we started tracking community groups, such as community nonprofits and organizations trying to speak their voice and bring justice to the grassroots level. A big part of our work includes redeeming and facilitating food assistance currencies or alternative currencies at the farmer's market. This is one of the ways that we provide direct access to community members in our market. You'll see that SNAP benefits, Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or also known as EBT or food stamps, are welcome at the Kalamazoo Farmer's Market. And this past year, we contributed to our total since 2013 of $150,000 plus in SNAP benefits that have been redeemed by vendors at our market. The Double Up Food Bucks program you'll see on the chart to the right is an incentive program that's part of a statewide initiative that provides up to $20 for free each market day as a match in those SNAP benefits, basically encouraging customers and community members who have access to SNAP or food stamps to come to the market and use those programs to get access to fresh fruits and vegetables. $20 in SNAP benefits can be added and create $40, and this is just one example of what you could buy with $40 on market. I believe this is a Thanksgiving meal for five people as well. Other programs include WICs, Project Fresh, and Senior Project Fresh coupons, and this work takes a lot of our time, but we're really proud to recognize that 99% of our eligible vendors are participating in these programs, and almost 97% of the currencies that we push out into the community are being redeemed by our vendors as well. Both of those show strong, robust systems and examples of opportunities for growth and opportunities for access in our community. I want to hand it off to Gabby, who's going to talk a little bit about some of the sustainability portions and some of the things we've been focusing on.
Cool. Well, one cool stat we had was that we figured out that the average distance traveled by the growers is 22.36 miles. I hear a lot on news and stuff about how on average our food from supermarkets and elsewhere comes from 1,500 miles away, so this is pretty great. The closest vendor we have is 1.85 miles, living in Kalamazoo, and the first one away is 52 miles away in Grand Rapids. There's only a few that hit that 50 mark, most are within 22. This year, we partnered with Kalamazoo Loaves and Fishes to do kind of a gleaning donation program. So they come to the market from around noon to 2:00, and they pick up food from vendors. This year, about 19 participated, and they donated 27,500 pounds of food. That's about 23,000 meals that went out into the community of just fresh, great, local food. It's going to continue next year and just get even better. We started in July this year, so next year we'll be starting in May and hope to have some food drives onsite.
I'll talk about one of our programs that we're really proud of, the night markets, something that we added to the farmer's market lineup. It's an opportunity for community members to come shop the market in the evening on Thursday nights from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., again, adding more hours and more potential access for our farmer's markets to our community. Additionally, this became a very prominent and exciting social scene where people were coming to enjoy live music and support good causes like the Can Do Kitchen and the American Culinary Federation Chapter. Here's a picture of one of our farmers and some local chefs at an event called The Farmer and a Chef, where farms were pairing foods with local chefs who were preparing samples onsite at the market and sharing those with the customers. That was something that we added new to the farmer's market program this year, was having cooking demos live onsite at the market. And I believe the culinary program and the ACF chapter were a huge part of that, as well as our food navigator, Kristin Blood, who couldn't be here tonight to join us.
We've really been trying to increase and celebrate biking to the market as well. So at the night markets, we have free bike valet, also on a couple Saturdays throughout the year. About 70 or more people participated at each night market, which was pretty great. They bring their bike down, we watch it for them. We also joined a bicycle benefits program, so that's kind of a nationwide program where independent businesses can join up and give a discount to bikers. So they would sell these little stickers to bikers, they'd put it on their helmet, and when they show that to any business that participates, they get a discount. So here in town, the farmer's market participates by having about 20 of our vendors give out discounts to bikers. And then the co-op has a program, the PFC, as well as Arcadia joined, so that's pretty And then on the right is Kristin, our food navigator. So she worked with us and helped us do a lot of the cooking demos. Probably the best one we did throughout the season was the apple cider tasting. We made it a bit of a competition with the People's Choice Award, and then we had some celebrity guest judges down in the left right there. A lot of people came out, it was great. Hope to continue that with different fruits and vegetables throughout the season next year. And kind of continuing that education piece, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, kids from the Y and the city parks and rec programs come out. We kind of give them some education, let them talk to the farmers, teach them about composting and whatnot. And then the Y kids, on their last day, we bring them to Rose Scobie's Farm, Scobie's Produce, and they just have a blast. We ride around on golf carts, they get to pick vegetables, see where everything is actually grown. It's a really cool program. And we open in 152 days.
So next season, the farmer's market will be opening its 104th season. This past year, the 2016 season has been the 103rd edition of the Kalamazoo Farmer's Market in this community, something that dates back to this commission in 1913 and even earlier appropriating funds to create. The last four years have been operated and stewarded by our team and the People's Food Co-op, and in that time, we've grown our roster of vendors from 95 businesses in 2013 to over 212 participating businesses this past year. Our social media accounts, I won't say are through the roof, but they continue to grow at a rapid pace, posting 15,000 Facebook followers, 3,000 Instagram followers, and almost 1,800 Twitter followers in just a few short years of time. The future of our farmer's market is bright in our community. On the horizon is a new facility. Our community partners and city partners are working hard and diligently to bring that vision and that goal to a reality. If you drive past the market, you'll notice our neighboring building has been tore down, and that seems to be a beacon of light in the direction of this new market need. We're working hard to create and craft a zero-waste vision for our farmer's market, reducing the impact on our land and our community, and continuing to develop our education and cooking demo programs well into the future. We see our farmer's market as a really unique and vital place of access for food in our community, both for community members and consumers, but also for vendors, those who are creating foods and spending their time to run their business to bring food access to our community. They need a place to sell direct to our colleagues and our friends and our family. It's been an honor to serve in this way, and I look forward to seeing what happens next at the Kalamazoo Farmer's Market, and I would be happy to answer any questions the Commissioners may have.
Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner, our Vice Mayor, Queen?
Just to comment, you guys do such a great job. I go out there almost every Saturday, and I didn't realize all the other stuff you were doing, about taking those kids out to the farm and the other things you do. I think that's great that you're doing that, so what a jewel, and you guys have enhanced it tremendously, so thank you for what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. So one thing I would like to note that we have benefited greatly from is this idea, I'm attributing it to the mayor here, but four years ago, the idea of a partnership between a private entity in town and the city of Kalamazoo, which has taken one of the fantastic pieces of Kalamazoo, I've always felt that, and just made it astoundingly better with their trajectory for improvement yet. I think that is a fantastic example of creative thinking, of bringing people with particular interests and expertise into areas where the city was kind of just providing that basic service but didn't have that focus. It is an astounding example of good collaborative work in town, and obviously, the people who do it are the key figures that have to make that work, and it's been fantastic. So I look for nothing but great things. For so long, I felt that the farmer's market, while you talk about food, that's like the biggest social gathering place in the city of Kalamazoo, where if you want to see somebody, you just wander down there, and, you know, your spouse or your partner, whoever goes with you, is tugging on your sleeve, "When are we going to leave? When are we going to leave? Who are you going to talk to?" So it's a fantastic community building undertaking. I really, really appreciate that work.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Urban?
Well, I echo what Commissioner Anderson has said. I recognize the value to the community of having a place to meet, where the whole community is together. There's distinctions that we normally get beaten down on television, just seem to be vanished at our market days with all the people there. And I'm very excited about how much your program has grown, but I want to kind of ask you a question that you may not have an answer for right now, but it's a concern that some people have. To the extent that nonprofits are subsidized by the city, that creates a, can create a problem for profit entities who have to compete with nonprofits. And of course, knowing how dependent the city is on tax base, we want to not damage the prospects of for-profit entities. So I don't know if that's a real concern, if it has substance or not, but I'm just, because you're here and I'm here, I'm just bringing it up, and maybe we could talk later about it. Maybe this is, you have an answer, if you want to share it now, great. If not, I won't hold you to anything right this moment.
Certainly, yeah. Well, I have a philosophy about that that may be worth sharing, and that the marketplace is a natural place of competition. Vendors are selling literally the same exact thing side by side and competing with one another in a way that is also collaborative and community-driven, but at the heart of it, they're supporting themselves and their business. And I think that's healthy and appropriate, and something to be mindful of as well. And it's really exciting, and one of the things that I think makes the farmer's market unique is that each business supports their neighbors through that competition. They're buying products that they can turn into value-added goods, like quiches or baked goods, or items for their food trucks that they're getting direct from other vendors, and they're embracing that competition as an opportunity. I can't speak to the subsidies of the nonprofit organizations, but I do know that nonprofits play an extremely vital role in our community in providing direct services and direct access to many of members in our community in myriad ways that I can't even begin to describe or dream about. And for that, I'm really grateful. And all of those businesses have a place on our public market and in our community market, I believe. And we are developing systems and methodologies and processes to provide that access, and it may not happen immediately, and it may take time, but I believe that a farmer's market, or a community market, or a public market can be a place where those businesses, nonprofit or for-profit, can come together, can collaborate, can find ways to build community, and can continue to thrive in a healthy way.
Thank you.
And with that, we want to thank you for the report, but there's one other thing we need to do tonight, and that is, we have someone who's leaving our community, and we want to make sure we recognize great work of Chris Broadbent.
Thank you.
So I am humbled that I have this honor, and I'm probably not the longest visitor, but I think my time of visiting over 35 years here to the farmer's market is possibly longer than some people have been alive here on the commission. I'm not certain about exact birthdays, but...
Or outgoing market managers.
Rub it in, okay.
Just kidding.
And so I have the honor of reading this proclamation for Chris Broadbent. "Thank you, sir, December 5, 2016. Whereas the purpose of the Kalamazoo Farmer's Market is to connect customers and market businesses through honest relationships and support our community and local economy through a thriving market culture. And whereas, when Chris Broadbent started his role as manager of the Kalamazoo Farmer's Market in 2013, there were 65 vendors, what was already busy and bustling. And whereas, Chris had a vision and hunger to take the market and make it better. Over the next four years, he helped to transform the Kalamazoo Farmer's Market into one of the best markets in the state. And whereas, under his leadership, by the end of 2016, the market had grown to 125 small businesses..." Not not-for-profits, Jack, trying to be for-profit. "...startups, farmers, and entrepreneurs, with at least two live musical acts each week. The market also hosted some of Kalamazoo's first bike valets. All of this activity attracted over 10,000 visitors to the market each week. And whereas, Chris elevated the SNAP and Double Up Food Bucks program to the market to the tune of nearly a million dollars in spending for low-income Kalamazoo-area families, he also started the wildly successful night markets, which have become one of the first Kalamazoo-area events to have composting and recycling as part of their standard operating procedure. And whereas, Chris's contributions turned the Kalamazoo Farmer's Market into a regional destination for visitors and a place for local families to gather and buy fresh food and local goods, all while supporting local businesses. Now therefore, I, David Anderson, on behalf of the 51st City Commission and Mayor Bobby J. Hopewell of the City of Kalamazoo, do hereby recognize Chris Broadbent today, Monday, December 5, 2016, for his four years of service and his many accomplishments during his time with the Kalamazoo Farmer's Market. His work has helped to create a thriving local market for local producers and a destination for our region, and we thank him for his efforts."
Thank you.
Some of your friends plotted to do this.
I'm sure, I'm sure. Thank you very much. I'd be happy to answer any questions at any other point in the future and wish you all the best of luck. Thank you.
Commissioners, you have the agenda before you this evening. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Anyone in the audience wanting to comment on items under our consent agenda, that's items under F, that item will need to be moved to our regular agenda. If you have such an item, please indicate it this time. Hearing none. Communications Manager, it's...
Yeah, one item this evening. Next week, Monday, December 12, we will be having our 2017 budget work session here at City Hall in this community room. That meeting will begin at 6:00 p.m. and look forward to presenting the budget that was transmitted last week to the commission and available to the public. So that's all I have, Your Honor.
Item E1, I'll now open a public hearing to hear public comments on an ordinance rezoning the east 12.78 acres of 4501 Arboretum Parkway from Zone CC to Zone RM-24. Mr. Manager, you have a report this evening?
Your Honor, I believe staff would be available for any questions that come up after the public hearing, and the commission has time to ask questions. So I believe a presentation was given last week, or last meeting, I wasn't here, but so we'll wait until then.
Thank you. Anyone wanting to comment on this item, please step to the podium. You'll have four minutes. Give us your name and whether you live within the city. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Mike Speedy. I'm with American Kindle Properties, a developer. I don't live in the area, I grew up in the area, but I'm from Indianapolis. I'm back to see family and to see, hopefully, this approved, if it's your will. But I have basically two points that I want to expand on in my four minutes. One is traffic, so surely you'll hear some concerns about that, as well as design and density, they go together. And then lastly, a brief land use argument. Regarding traffic, I want you to, again, when you're considering the comments tonight, to know that there's no vehicular connection between Arcadia and Arboretum Parkway. In fact, the nearest entrance between the proposed development and Arcadia is close to a mile and a half away, separated by three existing traffic signals. Another consideration to take into account is that when our... is that when Arboretum was originally approved, it anticipated over 856 homes. I am told that if this were to be approved, we would not have hit the halfway mark on that current approved 856 homes of various types. I am told that, and I will say to you, if the staff or the site plan process requires a traffic impact study, we will certainly comply. We're accustomed to that at the site plan stage. So that is, those are the things I'd ask you to consider as you hear traffic concerns. Next thing I want to talk about is design and density. Density and design, they go together. We are able to offer you the quality at the density that we're proposing. Something less than that would impact the feasibility and our ability to deliver on the promises that we're giving to you in design. Now let me talk about design. We're talking nine, 10-foot ceilings, attached garages, some of them with direct entry. Direct entry means you are open through a remote, pull into your home and go right from your home into an apartment. That is, as well as all of our garaged areas, which you'll see on the site plan, are screened from Arboretum Parkway. That was very important to the foundation. You'll see on the site plan that we gave you that there's anticipated landscaping, walls, fences of all attractive and decorative qualities. Other things that we're taking into consideration is lots of windows, atrium doors, not sliders, with transoms on the top. Nine-foot ceilings kind of require that to let natural light in. We're also wanting an environmentally friendly compactor. What does that mean? No truck will be on the property unless that compactor is full. When it's full, it sends a message. Then the truck pulls on, it hauls away. That's opposed to the dumpsters that wind through in the middle of the night and cause names, problems and chew up pavement and have broken down screening. We're also anticipating two-tone paints, large walk-in closets, large foot-size washer and dryer connections, microwaves, ice makers, granite countertops. That's right, granite countertops in all the kitchens. So we have the, one of the toughest, highest quality, set in the standard high. And that's where I, but we're able to afford this with the density that we're proposed. We're not here asking for public participation. We're not looking for subsidized financing, not even marketing to students, not designed for student population. We're designed for young professionals, old professionals, people who, like my parents, moved here, moved into Drake's Pond for a year where they built a house. Like, also people like my brother-in-law, who's an associate dean at the medical school here and has been a part of the medical community for over 20 years. Before he was the associate dean, he was in charge of the resident program from Michigan State at Bronson in his job and was finding housing for his residents. And it was no small task. He lived in Green Tree when he was a resident in this community. So I know from personal experience, the need for quality, new housing. Know from professional experience. And we think that this development, if approved, as we show it to you, will be a tremendous tax benefit to the community and benefit as...
Thank you, sir, your time has expired. Next, please. Good evening, sir.
Yeah, Mayor Hopewell, Manager Risma and Commissioners and guests. My name is Richard Skalsky. I used to work for the City of Kalamazoo for 38 years. I was an engineer here, graduated from Michigan State as a landscape architect, but I found out right away that the city paid engineers more than they paid landscape architects. So I moved in that direction. But from the other side, I lived in Arcadia neighborhood at 835 Basel, just beyond the school for 30 years of my early career. So I'm familiar with the neighborhood concerns as well. Now, as an engineer, I'm familiar with the design criteria, the open space concept. And again, they wouldn't be here tonight if they wanted to go in with commercial. With commercial property, the city allows, under the requirements, could have gone in with an 80% impervious surface. That's building footprint as well as the related parking. 80%, at least 20% for percolation, stormwater and other needs. The other end of that is that the opportunity that roadway presents, some of the thunder that was presented by the previous speaker. Arboretum Parkway is the last year that I saw with capacity, shows a traffic count of approximately 4,500 vehicles. I mean, that road can adequately handle far more than that. With access on the east at Howard and Kendall and on the west at Drake, there is, as he said, no connection to Arcadia, none proposed. So as far as impact on the neighborhood, there isn't going to be any. Again, the roadway is designed to carry far more traffic than is currently there. So that's not really an issue. Open space, again, under the current proposal, 50% minimum of that land will be open space versus the potential 20%, maybe a little plus, under commercial. So it's an easy solution, just to go that way. The other thing that you kind of alluded to as well. Like I said, I worked for the City of Kalamazoo. I lived in Ashmore Township. I was on the planning commission there for seven years when we lived out there after I retired from the city. So I know what you're deliberating here and looking at. But the opportunity to get this land out of the Western Michigan University Foundation, tax exempt, onto the tax rolls, whether it's commercial or residential. Residential is the highest best use. And I think that's what we should do. That's what we need to look at other areas of the city. Because over 50% of land in the city of Kalamazoo is exempt from any property taxes, yet we're still providing them with all the same services. The rest of us are paying for it. So I think this is the way to go and to kind of borrow the thunder that we've heard many times before. Let's roll the boat, baby. Let's move ahead on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I am Rex Brugman. I reside at 806 Ellendale in the City of Kalamazoo. My home is located in the Arcadia neighborhood. I can tell you, as a city resident, as a person who values small D democracy, as a law school graduate and practicing attorney, as a person who has taken a land use class in law school and has taken quite a bit of constitutional law, there are actually some things I don't like about this process. I don't like amending the zoning map as to undeveloped land for an individual project. I don't like the focus on unenforceable minutia, marketing strategies, garages, granite countertops, in presenting this project to neighborhood residents in the City Commission and advocating for a change to the zoning map. Candidly, I don't like the city and the WMU Foundation not living with the existing zoning and the related 2005 West Side Area Plan. Having said all that, let me make a proposal. This project has a density of over 20 units per acre. High density under the 2005 West Side Area Plan is anticipated as being 12 to 15 units per acre. Vote this down and direct city staff to talk with the WMU Foundation and the developer and tell them to come back with a project that has a density of not more than 15 units per acre. Removing a few buildings from this project ought to do the trick. City staff has argued that the higher density is okay because we are still way under 856 units total for the WMU Foundation parcels dealt with by the 2005 West Side Area Plan. This argument is misleading in that it ignores the fact that both Linden Grove Middle School and the Arboretum Parkway have been built on the parcels in question. Cramming higher density onto the remaining property is not consistent with the plan. Assuming that the WMU Foundation, the developer and city staff come back with an essentially similar but less dense project, 15 units per acre or less, I for one will be down here as a city and neighborhood resident to support it. Let me remind you that what you're doing is a legislative act. It is not an administrative act. You should be conducting yourselves accordingly. Regardless of the fact that we have a city major form of government, you in this instance should be acting in a fashion most independent from city staff. Finally, I want to call your attention to something that I find troubling and I think you should find troubling. The 2005 West Side Area Plan is the document the public should be discussing, if we're discussing this matter at all. Yet this currently applicable document, to my knowledge, was not available on the city planning portion of the website until, as far as I know, today. Even today, what was posted was a draft document from 2003. I sent a letter to Ms. Kip dated October 20th, 2016, asking that the 2005 West Side Area Plan be added to the website. But to my knowledge, the 2003 draft plan was just added today. My ask is to vote this thing down, do what you have to do to drop the density to a level consistent with the 2005 West Side Area Plan. Finally, let's put the 2005 West Side Area Plan on the city website in a way that is easy to find and keep it there. I guess my only more informal comment on that is that when I think about the time and effort that was put into that plan and I think about the meetings that were held, it's just disheartening to not even have it on the website when I think about what these meetings were like 10 years ago or more. So let's do a little better job on that.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wanting to address the site? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, the requested actions, a motion to adopt the ordinance is their motion. So move, moved by Commissioner Anderson? Supported by Commissioner Urban. We're in discussion. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, this is one of these interesting kind of community responsibilities that you end up having when you decide that you somehow have a good enough judgment to run for something like a city commission and you get to participate in making decisions that oftentimes aren't going to make everybody happy. And it's also, I guess, perhaps even more difficult in a way in this situation because we're a sized town where you're likely to know people and respect those people and consider those people friends in a variety of situations that may have an opinion that is different from your own. And you still have to decide that and then somehow go on. So respecting that thinking, I guess, I just want to talk a little bit about, you know, how I'm thinking about this. And maybe I will, well, we'll start with my experiences tonight and then just back up a little bit, kind of go backwards. So tonight before this meeting, I decided, once again, even though I've driven by this site, I mean, times beyond which can be counted, as I coached youth soccer for years and years and years and drove down the driveway to the soccer park out there and I thought it would be worth another visit. And so this evening, I went out there and walked a bit on Ellendale and Edinburgh that kind of dead ends up against this and walked around the school site and the property itself and on the intersection between Drake and Arcadia Parkway and down again to where the light is at the soccer fields. And I guess after that walk, my initial thought was, if we cannot allow this kind of development there on that site, it can't be done in Kalamazoo. When you look at the attributes of what exists right there, you've got light, you've got infrastructure in place. We're not being asked to extend any streets, any driveways. We've got a well-built, well-planned Arcadia Parkway, five lanes wide right there where it comes up the intersection, meeting another five-lane-wide street with turn lanes. Parkway has bike lanes on it. We've got wide walking paths, we've got sidewalks. And when you stand on the site in the evening and you look around as the lights come up, I mean, you can see right across the road, there's a well-lit daycare center. Behind that, there's another high-density apartment community just on the other side. As you look back in the other direction, you see the lights from the church parking lot that are directly behind us and other apartment communities dotting along Drake there. It certainly is no doubt a place where there is a lot of traffic. You can't get away from that. Drake's busy. As you go down further to the intersection and you find your way back into the neighborhood, which is a beautiful oasis neighborhood, Arcadia, which sits in the shadow of the largest and one of the greatest public institutions we have in Kalamazoo, which is Western Michigan University. There's a lot of traffic up and down West Michigan there, too. And as you drive by the entrance to the neighborhood, you note that some of the streets say no outlet. The reason for that, there is no outlet. You cannot get into this area by getting, cutting through the Arcadia neighborhood. I was also struck by the kinds of things we talk about when we talk about walkability. And you walk to the end of Edinburgh as it dead ends and leaving the three-foot-wide city sidewalk there, you begin to walk down a 10-foot-wide, beautiful lit path leading directly from that end of the neighborhood as far away as possible from where any traffic is, allowing students and parents to walk in from the neighborhood approximately before you hit the school that sits there, a brand-new school, possibly 600 feet along a well-lit pathway. And then further on, another 1,000 feet through the entire school grounds before you get close to the boundary where this property would sit. So lovely wooded buffer zone along that side of the neighborhood. Astoundingly, from where I live, which is more downtown Kalamazoo, as I stood at the beginning of that path leaving the neighborhood, even with the leaves off the trees and all the traffic happening out there in Drake Road, less traffic noise than I would expect. I really thought this is a lovely and wonderfully isolated community neighborhood here, surrounded by busy activities in the city. Now I want to sort of stretch back in time a little bit. It's that, yes, there's been a lot of talking about that property, which is not owned by the City of Kalamazoo. The City of Kalamazoo cannot decide what to do with that property. It's been a lot of discussion. And that discussion, you know, has occurred over 10-plus years, if not longer. And that discussion has resulted generally in a plan. And that plan is more density, closer to Drake Road, less density adjacent to the houses in the neighborhood. And some of the things that were imagined for that property, we've already adjusted for. When the original plan was discussed, there was no discussion about putting a great, brand-new public school right there. Beautiful school, a school that we were very much at risk of losing to the township. And that was the last thing we wanted to do at the time. That was a change in use there when the school went in. A lot of community partners came together, including the Western Foundation, to lower the cost of that property, allow that school to happen. And that idea, how does a community planning idea become codified? You know, it turns into a zoning plan. And oftentimes, when zoning occurs, you don't always get the perfect fit every piece of the zoning requirement. Requests come in, you know, from a developer who's willing to invest and put at risk millions and millions of dollars for that undertaking. And so relative to that, and I know it's been said often that the idea that that is commercially zoned, you could imagine just a whole list of much less positive things that could happen on that site. So my visit out there this evening and having experienced it being here for a while through this discussion and recognizing that, I mean, I did the math. It comes up to 18.78 units per acre myself when I did the dividing. Maybe I didn't do it right. But when I do the math and look at this, look at the density, leaving open space there, really, you know, I don't necessarily care about the granite countertops either, but the outside design, you know, a quality project, the intentional approach to leaving barriers and to concentrate the housing use to use open space. I mean, that to me is an example of the kind of good design we're looking for in town. So that said, I will be voting in support of this. I do want to, you know, thank very much the developers who have put, already spent a bunch of time and energy trying to bring a quality project to us here in Kalamazoo. I can't, you know, it is beyond count the amount of times that we've talked about the fact that we are most certainly desperately in need of developers in this town who are willing to come and work with us here in Kalamazoo and contribute to this, to this great undertaking we have going here in this community. And so in this case, I just feel, you know, that I couldn't be more supportive of this activity. I feel like it's sensitive to issues of the neighborhood. And I'm hoping that even though there, I have people who I consider to be good friends, who may not agree with me about this, you know, that we will consider to be good friends, no matter what happens out of this tonight. So thanks very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other comments, Commissioners?
Commissioner Millsar? Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if I could get some clarification from staff, perhaps, on the, the 800-unit figure being thrown around. It's my understanding that, you know, some of that space is now taken up by the school, which has gone in and that, that changes things around. Most of it, I'm curious, is how much, outside of this development, how much space is still available in this area for development? And could we get into a, a, a capacity issue if those were developed at a, at a more dense space as well?
Manager Ritz?
I will turn to our city planner, deputy planner, sorry, Rob Belkum.
Good evening, sir. The 856 units comes right from the west-side plan. That is what, the number of units that was planned for the overall arboretum property, which spans Drake Road to Kendall. As far as how those units are distributed, the higher density, as was mentioned, is along the Drake Road or the west side of the overall complex. The, the center section is the medium density and the eastern section is the lower density. The Walden Woods Project, which has been built, qualifies for the low-density section. So, the middle area is vacant at this time, other than the school. That is the area where we would see the medium-density development, which would be 12 to 15 units per acre, roughly.
Commissioner, Commissioner Knott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions for staff. So, I've, in the last week, two weeks, heard about different plans. The 2003 that's on the website right now, there's a 2005, if you talk to the planner Kik, there's a 2006 plan. So, the west-side plan, right now, I'm going to speak of that and it encompasses all three versions or different documents. You just referenced, sir, the medium density of 12 to 15, but this project would be, as Commissioner Anderson just said, about 18.75 units. So, I'm looking for the staff's rationale, why, if the plan that we've all referenced asks for 12 to 15, why we are going ahead and considering a rezoning that would allow for 24 units per acre.
Thank you. There is a discrepancy in the west-side area plan. Under the high-density land-use category, on the narrative section of the plan, it does say 12 to 15 units per acre. On the map, the actual future land-use map for the plan, it says over 12 units, or more than 12 units per acre. When we have a discrepancy like that in planning, typically, it's deferred to the map. Also, in the zoning ordinance, the corresponding high-density residential zoning district calls for between 24 and 36 units per acre. That's a correspond, corresponding zoning district to a land-use category of high-density.
Thank you.
Other questions, Commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, just me throw a couple of things in there. I mean, I think Mr. Breugman makes some good points, but on balance, I think that this is, this could be a lot worse if we put in there a business, which was bringing in trucks all night or lights all night. And I think that the developer has really done a good job trying to accommodate the, the neighborhood. So, on balance, I'm for it.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioner Knott?
Sorry, I have another question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe this is for the city attorney, but why do we defer to the map if there's a discrepancy in the plan?
Mr. Attorney?
That's a matter, it's a, it's a way that courts have interpreted that language in terms of when you have a discrepancy, what, what are you going to defer to?
Other comments, Commissioners? Mr. Millsar?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just wanted to, to share, I guess, just a variety of thoughts. You know, it's a, it's a complicated issue, made even more complicated by the fact that we can plan our land use all we want and right across Drake is another municipality that could, you know, essentially pack it as, as dense as they want with no planning or infrastructure or anything, which would also complicate this. So, it's, you know, the whole thing is very complicated and, and frustrating in many ways. Even as we look at this, you know, we're, we're sort of citing a plan, you know, for why, you know, why this is, you know, the, the 2006 plan is great, but also, we don't want commercial zoning there because that could be bad, but that's what the plan has. So, I, I can, I can sympathize with frustrations in the community as to how this has gone down. You know, for me, I, I think it comes down to housing. Kalamazoo has a housing problem and, and part of that comes down to that, that issue of townships and the city and our boundaries and, you know, why is this commercial property, which has been available for development, sat vacant while, again, across the street, you know, commercial property after commercial property goes up? So, I'm going to be supporting it tonight, but I, I do have sympathy for, for a lot of the, the issues on the process and, and also future concerns. You know, we're, we're talking about, you know, the medium density of the middle area, but clearly, we're willing to change the zoning if we like, if we like a plan. So, I, I can't, you know, I can't walk out of here saying, "Don't worry, you know, that middle density is going to be fine" because it's very possible that someone comes through and says, "Hey, I need another rezoning," and, and we'll support that. So, you know, definitely understand and hear the concerns I'm, I'm hearing out there and conflicted about my vote. So, I wanted to, to share that. But we, we, we are in desperate need of, of quality housing in this city.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Urban?
Thank you, Mayor Hopwell. Well, it, it seems, as we progress into the 21st century, we have a ring of, of commercial establishments around Kalamazoo and Kalamazoo is going to become the bedroom community for the suburbs. We are heading in that direction. And so, that has lots of implications that are, that are exciting on one hand and frightening in other ways. But because of some unique features of Kalamazoo, namely that so much of our land is tax-exempt, taxpayers in the city bear a very high burden of property tax. And when we think about all the citizens in the city, we have to think about what can we do to provide services for them at a cost that's affordable. And one way to do that is to grow our tax base, plain and simple. Growing our tax base with, with commercial property may be more feasible now that there's a plan afoot to lower our property taxes. But that also says, now that we've lowered our property taxes, our tax base needs to grow to compensate for that, especially if the Foundation for Excellence is not successful in raising the money it needs to create the endowment. So, all those things are weighing on my mind. We're in an era that's different from 2006. We have to take into account conditions that are at the present and mitigate the downside as much as possible, but also seize on the opportunities on the plus side as well. So, I'll be voting for this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other comments? I just have, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Knott, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with Commissioner Millsar. I'm conflicted on this vote for a number of reasons. You know, but at the end of the day, we've, facing a, a revenue shortage, I won't repeat what's already been said, and we need more for-profit properties on the tax rolls. That being said, I, I want us to do better when it comes to public participation in planning processes, getting plans up on our website in a timely fashion, getting the right plan on the website so that everybody has an access point to it. You know, we're undertaking this large Imagine Kalamazoo planning process right now, which we keep saying so many things, whether it's the Foundation for Excellence or Complete Streets, a number of our things are attached to this planning process. And I don't want residents to come back in a year or two and feel the same frustration that Mr. Breugman's felt as it relates to what he went through in the 2005, 2006 planning process. I think that we need to do better as we're planning. We heard it at one of our work sessions recently, or maybe it was the last neighborhood meeting, from the Stewart folks, talking about they didn't feel that their voices were heard during planning processes. So, I am conflicted. I, I, at the end of the day, will vote yes for this because of the income tax, the revenue that will be generated, but I just, I feel as a, as a staff and a body that we can do better by the residents.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just have a quick question. What has the school had to say about this project?
The school did receive the notice of the public hearings, both Planning Commission and City Commission. They did not have a response.
All right. And just my, my comments and, and I'm going to correct these carefully because I've been around in the planning business in this city for quite a while, on the Planning Commission's zoning board, and I don't know what else I was doing, but planning, it seems like was, was it. And, you know, we have adjusted and changed how we've done participation in so many ways. And some of those times, I thought, "Man, oh, man, this is it." And then we have someone says, "It wasn't it." And then we try something else and we do that and we're told it wasn't it. We sit up here and, "Not enough time. We didn't know." I'm not sure that there's any one, one way of, of doing community engagement or engagement even in your own work worlds that you're ever going to find that you have accomplished everything for every constituent, because everybody's got different perspectives, just like each one of you do up here. Do I believe we have to always strive to do our best and work, work our best to include and, and get as much input as possible? Absolutely. But at the end of the day, I'm not sure that 74,000, 75,000 individuals are actually going to participate in every process we have. And so, you may have individuals and groups of individuals that say, "You didn't do enough." I, I'm not sure, I think Planner, well, I know Planner Chamberlain and I had, at the time, had many conversations, and I'm hammering him as the chair of the Planning Commission. Okay, stop not doing this the, the best. And every time we, we wander into that realm, that someone's not happy. And I'm not sure exactly what, what solves that, but I do believe that, especially with having learned, looking at what we're doing with Imagine Kalamazoo, we're moving best practices, we're moving the needle on, on how we have participation happening. And so, I, I appreciate what hasn't happened, but I am so thrilled with what we're really working to do right now in this community to engage, especially around our strategic vision and our master plan. And I'm not saying there isn't work that we can continue to do, but I think that we certainly are moving that dime. Clerk Boiling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Commissioner Millsar?
Yes.
Commissioner Sykes?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney?
Yes.
Mayor Hopwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner's motion carried. Mr. Manager, the consent agenda, please.
We have 12 items this evening. First is the approval of a one-year contract extension with PVS Technologies for the purchase of 200 dry tons of ferric chloride in the amount of $121,800. Next is the approval of a 12-month maintenance contract with Hexagon Intergraph Corporation for the continued maintenance of the city's computer aided dispatching, records management, and mobile data community, computing systems in the amount of $167,302. Next is the approval of a contract with Nashville Construction Company for the construction of the Portage Creek Trail in the amount of $432,551.23. Next is the approval of a one-year contract for gasoline and diesel fuel from Kalamazoo Oil Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $591,107. Next is the first reading of an ordinance to amend certain sections of Chapter 38 of the Kalamazoo Code to change rates charged for water service. The ordinance amends Chapter 38 of the Kalamazoo Code of Ordinances to increase water service revenues by 8% across the board, effective January 1, 2017. Next is the adoption of a resolution approving six new neighborhood enterprise zone certificates in the Vine Neighborhood, transferring two previously approved NEZ certificates and revoking one previously approved NEZ certificate. Next is the adoption of a resolution authorizing the issuance of tax anticipation notes for fiscal year 2017 in the amount of $3 million. Next is the approval of a resolution from the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, Liquor Control Commission, recommending approval of a small winemaker license for Gonzo's Big Dog Brewing Company located at 140 Southwest Nidge Avenue. Next is the approval of a resolution setting the schedule of regular city commission meetings for the 2017 calendar year. Next is the authorization for the mayor and city manager to execute a one-year lease for Bronson Park with Kalamazoo County. Next is the approval of an intergovernmental fire protection hazardous material incidents response agreement. And finally, approval of the appointment of Christopher Flack to the Zoning Board of Appeals as alternate member number two for a term expiring on March 31, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioners requested actions, a motion to approve items 1 through 12 and authorize the city manager to sign all documents on behalf of the city is their motion. Moved by Commissioner Knott?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Millsar. Clerk Boiling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Millsar?
Yes.
Commissioner Sykes?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney?
Yes.
Mayor Hopwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner's motion carried. Mr. Manager?
Nothing to report this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. You have a report this evening?
No, Your Honor.
Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Thank you. We are now at Citizens' Comments. Any citizen wanting to comment on anything this evening, please step to the podium. You have four minutes. Give us your name and whether you live within the city and good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Neil Mioskowicz. My legal name is Asia Kazat. You all know me, I believe. Can I have a relatively small complaint compared to these million-dollar business deals that you've been listening to? But last time I was here, I spoke concerning the fact that we, someone has taken out the barrels from the bus terminals along the way. And as a result, we have trash accumulating at the bus stops, which doesn't do our fair city any good. I'd like to see whoever is responsible for the metro bus transit system, and maybe indirectly that could be Mr. Ritz or the city manager, who could cooperate with that bus terminal management to put some barrels in. And you know, if they get taken, there are some solutions to that. We could weld the cable through the barrel and weld the other end of the cable through the bus stop terminal, and it wouldn't be possible to just carry off the barrel. Because the barrels aren't there, we're getting paper in there, we're getting cans flattened out and thrown to some other side, other junk. And I, I like Kalamazoo. I even love it to a certain extent. And I hate to see bus stops turned into a trash arrangement. And so, I don't need the full four minutes, I'm just going to take about two minutes, but I wish we could do something about all the bus terminals. Some of them do have waste baskets, but many of them don't. And if we could put some in and fasten them down and empty them occasionally, that'd be a blessing.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. And I want to wish you merry trips because I hope to see you again. But I do want to thank one of your Commissioners tonight for a nice job he did with me over to the school. Cooney, I want to thank you very much, because, you know, I think that meant a lot that we were able to see somebody from Kalamazoo there. In fact, was she very surprised? Yes, she was. You know, when we, we give her out this stuff, I think she's not ready to cry, because there's so much stuff.
the bus stops, which doesn't do our fair city any good. I'd like to see whoever's responsible for the metro bus transit system, and maybe indirectly that could be Mr. Ritz or the city manager, who could cooperate with that bus terminal management to put some barrels in. And, you know, if they get taken, there are some solutions to that. We could weld the cable through the barrel and weld the other end of the cable through the bus stop terminal, and it wouldn't be possible to just carry off the barrel. Because the barrels aren't there, we're getting paper in there, we're getting cans flattened out and thrown to some other side, other junk. And I like Kalamazoo. I even love it to a certain extent, and I hate to see bus stops turned into a trash arrangement. And so, I don't need the full four minutes, I'm just going to take about two minutes, but I wish we could do something about all the bus terminals. Some of them do have waste baskets, but many of them don't. And if we could put some in and fasten them down and empty them occasionally, that'd be a blessing.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, and I want to wish you merry trips because I hope to see you again. But I do want to thank one of your Commissioners tonight for a nice job he did with me over to the school. Cooney, I want to thank you very much, because, you know, I think that meant a lot that little girl would see somebody from Kalamazoo there. In fact, was she very surprised? Yes, she was. You know, when we give her out this stuff, I think she's not ready to cry, because there's so much stuff we gave her that day. She's got three certificates, but she got a vest that she put on, and the kids are all looking at it, admiring it. It weighed about twenty pounds, I hope she ever wore it, but she did. And, you know, and also, we did one thing with the school, we did pass out American flag pins as well, because we had the American Legion State Commander in town, and he gave us a nice little talk to the girl. You know, it's nice to know that we have TV stations that do love to print the good news. You know, not only ours, but we had two others that was printed up. It was really nice in the paper, and that was the people that gave blankets to the homeless people. You know, these are young people. These are people of tomorrow that we're not looking at, that's doing this stuff in the city of Kalamazoo. In fact, one guy comes from the market and passed out blankets down here in Bronson Park, you know? You don't see no of that in that Kalamazoo paper, because all they want to do is talk about trash, what they can tear people apart and tell our, tear our city apart, and also our police department apart. That's the only kind of stuff they want to write. Nothing nice goes in that paper. I've never seen that paper yet print a bunch of stuff that was real good. I invited them to come over and print a little story about this girl, they never showed up. You know, and this is something a young girl read. And what about these young kids that won't give the blankets down here in the park? You didn't see nothing in the Kalamazoo Gazette about it? Or anything they like to do is write trash? And I'm sick and tired of the Kalamazoo Gazette, I'll tell you that. And thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. You can sign in after, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ed Tarkowski. I own a property on James Street in Kalamazoo. Sometimes I'm proud to say that, sometimes I'm not, but the reason I'm here tonight, standing before you, is I did read an article in the Gazette some time ago, probably in the last six months, about a reduction of pickup service for our once-a-month pickup service. And it said it was going to be reduced, and I think it's only going to be allowed to be picked up from, I think it was Memorial Day to Labor Day, it's a six-month instead of a twelve-month pickup. Does that mean we're going to get a reduction in our cost on our taxes? We pay to have this pickup, right? We now pay for it to happen once a month, okay? Now it's going to happen six times a year instead of twelve. Half as much, does that mean we're paying twice as much for it now? Think about that. Another thing, before I came here tonight, I saw a blurb on the news, something about, I think it was one of the hospitals, Bronson, or Board just wants to take over some property in Kalamazoo or occupy it. Now, this is another nonprofit, I think it was the Gazette Building, because the Gazette Building's now vacant. People, we've got to start thinking about the core of the city. If the core of the city, like Commissioner Urban's talking about, is saying not paying property tax, and everybody's in that mode right now about collecting tax and all these other things, so now we're going to allow somebody else to be a nonprofit and occupy another huge property that's been paying tax? Where are we heading? I don't understand it. I really don't. And I'm not saying I don't, I've traveled quite a bit, and I've seen how other places do business. For example, I spent quite a bit of time in California, in Oakland, San Francisco area and that, and they're very open and modern and do a lot of innovative things, and I think Kalamazoo's headed down that road. I think you guys are trying to do the best you can do with what you have to work with. Just, but little things matter a lot. For example, another one more example, and I'll be sitting down. When you guys clean the streets, we pay to clean the streets, right? Let's do it the days after they're collecting the trash. James Street, they're washing the street on Monday and Tuesday, and they're picking up the trash on Wednesday and Thursday. So we all know what's happening. Come Friday, it looks like a war zone. It's ridiculous. Doesn't cost any more money to reroute something, change the schedule, but that's where we should be thinking. And then I heard the gentleman talking about the farmer's market and all the accolades that follow. Those are great things. Oakland, California, and those areas have great farmers markets, directly from the farmer to the individual. But let's not knock down more buildings that the city has to pay for, areas designated, again, we're paying more tax, right? These buildings that, you know, farmer's market is great, but I don't, I don't know if the location's the best for transportation in and out, all these things they're trying to build around it. I think it's fabulous. But we need to think outside this proverbial box and start moving forward, collecting revenue timely. What was the other, I saw on the news the other day about a municipality that was trying to collect tickets, old parking tickets and things? They were helping these people by giving them more of an incentive to pay their tickets. We must have millions of dollars in unpaid tickets out there, I'm sure we do. Start thinking outside the box. Find people who want to think that way. Believe me, they'll be voted into office. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Seeing no one, we are Commissioners' Comments. Commissioner Millsar.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to thank everyone who came out tonight. It's appreciated, as always. Don't have much comments of my own tonight, other than I wanted to just speak on mobility in the city of Kalamazoo. Winter's coming. Over all my years, working with neighborhood associations, a very frequent topic that came up was the walkability of our neighborhoods in the winter months, and how that's a real problem. I know we've put some work into looking at changes with this. I know there were also some legal changes a year and a half ago in regards to who's responsible for sidewalks and not. And I just encourage us, again, to really think ahead this year, and hopefully work further towards having walkable sidewalks all year round. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Urban.
Thank you, Mayor Hopwell. Well, I hope that the two thousand and six West Side Plan stays on the website, and I would just ask that if there are any other plans that are in the city's planning office that could be on the website, it would be great if they all were there. It would be great if, in future, we can feel a little less conscience-stricken about things like this, because that's relatively easy to correct. I also, I was listening to the Citizens' Comments, and I would say, since I can't respond while you're speaking, I take this opportunity to do it. Jeremiah, I suggest that you take your question to the Central County Transportation Authority, because they're the people who run the buses now. The city's out of that business. We have only a lease agreement with them for the property that, where the garage is. But that's something that I would very much like to see. I would like the city, the Transportation Authority, to take responsibility for the area around their stops. It will take some people to do it and some cost, but I think our community, I hope, would think that the taxpayer money that it takes to do that, or the fare money, that's a good use of it. As far as comments about the hospitals taking up property, I've learned that not all parts of a hospital are nonprofit. The parts that are nonprofit are the parts that directly deal with medical services, doctor's offices, and other ancillary things that the, on the property that the hospitals own, is taxable. And the city has a way annually of reviewing all of that to make sure that that's accurate. I have a question that I would have, I needed research on, and the administration could maybe give me an answer. Residents for residences, property that's designed for residences of people who are working for the hospital, it seems to me those should be taxable, if that's what the hospital's planning to do with that property. If it's going to be a doctor's office or something like that, I think it would be taxed. We're very, very, very aware of our tax-based situation, and we're not going to let, at least, I hope we don't let anything slip by on that. About the scheduled street cleaning, I'm glad we have Citizens' Comments, time for these things to come up, because that's sometimes how we, how we learn about them. We all can hear about them privately, you can call us all up and not take up time in a meeting, but still, when you come down here, I learn from you. And it seems to me that coordinating street cleaning with trash pickup seems like something that shouldn't be too hard to do, and I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you.
Commissioner Knott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question that we might not have the answer to off the cuff, but do we know how we did last night? And I'm beat tired, so I can't think of the name of the road, but the folks off of Crane Park, last night we had our first.
Betsy Ann.
Betsy Ann Place, our first, thank you, slick night. Have we heard from any of those residents? Did we reach out to any of them to see how our change of plowing for those folks went?
I'm not aware of any contact from them. Director Baker, any feedback on our plan?
Do we implement the plan? I guess is one of the things the Commissioners are asking.
Yeah.
That we said we were going to. Sorry.
Good evening, Your Honor. We implemented a plan which involved maintenance. We modified the surface of the concrete, you know, we cut grooves into the pavement. We also had our crews out and implemented a enhanced recall or enhanced priority for that street. That street previously was under the program of a local dead end. We've heightened that priority to a major hill. That's, that is an internal designation that designates our plow response times. We, on Sunday night, we dispatched out five trucks for our hills. Those personnel that were on that route stayed for twelve hours. Then in the morning, we set, we delayed our leaf pickup, and then we sent our trucks out again. We have our supervisors that check out the routes, and we didn't hear of any slick spots. We also communicate, excuse me, with public safety, and we were not notified of any troubled spots. So usually in a situation like that, with a minor snowfall of an inch or less, our primary concern was refreeze. We didn't do a lot of blading, but we did spread salt. So, you know, at this time, we didn't hear any negative feedback from it, but we continue to monitor the situation. We are preparing for Thursday. We expect to have winter weather again, and we'll follow up at that point.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner Sykes. Commissioner Anderson.
I want to reference one thing that just passed through on our consent agenda tonight, and that was the first reading of an ordinance to amend Section Thirty-eight of our Kalamazoo Code to change the rates charged for water service. So that was the first reading, it's going to come back to us again. But I want to put that in some context, two things. One is that the general fund activities and our water and sewer activities are separate and distinct activities, and are funded in different ways. Our water and sewer activities are funded by the fees that are charged, unlike the general fund, which our primary source of revenue here is property taxes. So we don't raise any fees on the water side in order to create more revenue on the general revenue side. When we raise fees on the water side, which is what we're proposing to do, it is for resources to reinvest in our water system. And I want to then put that in a little bit of context. I think it was just today in the state of Michigan, and I'm going to get the title a little bit wrong here, there was a document released, Twenty-First Century Infrastructure, I think that's what it was called. This is something that folks have been working on for a year or two, if not longer, people with a whole variety of expertise areas, talking about infrastructure in the state of Michigan, obviously, at the local level, that is one of the primary things we're involved with, was talking tonight about plowing a street. So, and cutting some grooves so it wouldn't be so slippery. So, that said, one of those foundational pieces that's talked about in this report, which is frightening to witness, when it talks about all the lack of investment in infrastructure that's occurred, even more than other states here in the state of Michigan, this is a local response to that concern, which I'm hoping all of us will get a chance to look at a bit. I don't know if, Mr. Manager, if you had a chance to see any of that yet or not, it just came out, but to address one of those list of needs that is, you know, has been noticed for the state of Michigan, and remind all of us together here how important it is to continue to reinvest in maintenance and upgrading and upkeep of our all-important water system that serves so many people here, many, many more people than actually live in the city of Kalamazoo. So, first reading on that, just went by. Maybe some discussion about it when it comes up, but I think it's timely that we're doing that work relative to the release of this big study that came out today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three things. First of all, the issue of immigration has been very much on the agenda in this country over the last six months. And we have passed a resolution, a very strong resolution, declaring ourselves a welcoming city, and that was very much appreciated by people, especially people who are immigrants here. But there's a lot of details to make that work. We've been receiving a number of immigrants over the last six months, some from the Congo, some from Syria, and these people have been through a lot. And a number of churches and individuals have stepped up to help these folks, but there's still a lot more to do. We have many young people here under a program called DACA. These are young people that came to this country undocumented when they were children, and they've done all the right things. They've done their schoolwork, they're in college now, they're doing very well, but they have no legal justification to be here except for the DACA program, which President Obama put in place, and that program is under threat. So, these are our people, these are our young people. University of California today declared that they will not cooperate with the immigration enforcement people with regard to the DACA people. The statement that they made was, these are young people who have done everything that we could expect of them, and by any rational judgment, we should welcome them and take care of them while they're here. So I mention all this because tomorrow night, at the Public Library at six-thirty, there will be a program on immigration to talk about what is happening in the city and how we can help people who are immigrants to our city. That's tomorrow night, six-thirty, in the Van Dusen Room of the Public Library. So that's my first thing. Second thing is I want to congratulate Western Michigan University's football team for an amazing thirteen-and-o record. There are two undefeated teams in the country, and one of them's Alabama, and they're number one in the country, and the second is our young people. And I know some of these young people, because I have them in class, and they work exceptionally hard, extremely hard, and they've done a wonderful job for this city. Third thing is I want to congratulate Frank Warren for the, for the very beautiful ceremony he had for this young girl who had set up a lemonade stand in honor of the veterans. And it was a really great ceremony, Frank, and she was really appreciative. And it wasn't until afterwards that I found out that she is the granddaughter of Sherri Thomas Cloud, who is the Executive Director of Family and Children's Services in Kalamazoo. So, thank you, Frank, for doing.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll try to make mine quick, and I'm making comments to try to add some factual information to some things that we heard at the podium. So a little follow-up to Commissioner Urban. Bronson Hospital owns the Gazette Building. And remember, the Gazette Building is a private building. We, as a city, can't tell who can sell a building to whom. That's just not something we can do. But what is interesting that, and I know this because I used to count it for Bronson since I worked there, they do pay about, I think it's about a half million dollars in taxes each year to the city for the medical specialties building. But what's so interesting about the Gazette Building, which we're fortunate, is that
But what's so interesting about the Gazette Building, which we're fortunate, is that when they bought it, they left it on the tax rolls and are planning to keep it on the tax rolls until they really have solidified what they're doing, which they don't have to do that. But my point to you is that we can't, just like we can't tell you who you can sell your house to or whatever, we couldn't tell the owners of the Gazette Building that they could not sell to Bronson. We can talk to them about what we need in our community, and we've done some of that, but certainly, an engagement between private parties is not something that we can do or you should want us to do necessarily, to an extent that we tell people, you can't do something with your property. In regards to trash pickup, I'm not sure if we're talking our regular garbage pickup that comes every week, or if we're talking trash pickup in regards to our bulk pickup. But if we're talking the former, everybody has a different trash carrier, so I don't know how we coordinate that. But Director Baker's in the back. He was the gentleman that spoke. Those crews that clean the streets are his crews, and I'm sure he'd be able to talk to you about the schedule and what goes into that schedule for all the streets we have with regards to all the personnel we have that are building roads and taking care of roads and filling potholes, to picking up leaves, to shoveling snow, and when the climate changes or weather changes, you get a flood, whatever, these folks are multitasking and get retasked. So he can certainly can talk to you about the schedule. And then I want to finally also comment on the building that came down at the farmer's market. That was a church. It was off the tax rolls. It's in the one-hundred-year water plane. And I was concerned that we'd take down the building, and I thought, couldn't that be a part of the farmer's market indoor strategy? But this building had significant problems. So clearly, there's, there are some reasons behind some of the things we do, and I think most of the things we do, but that's why that building came down. And I do want to also congratulate our Broncos, not only our Bronco football team, but our hockey team is doing some incredible work on the ice. We have some great young people in this community, and talented athletes and even academic All-Americans, and so it's not just about what's happening on the gridiron or on the ice surface, it is about all these amazing things these young people bring to our community. And with that, we are adjourned.